Okay, good evening, everybody. This is a regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today's date is August 8th, 2022. A really nice, rather sultry viewing day, but it's still been great. July was great, but October, August is even better. So with that, I'd ask everyone to rise for the pleasure of the evening.
First, please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will offer the invitation. John, would you please?
Yeah, thank you for staying. We keep the time we come here together. We pray that you would be upon us as we go through today's meeting. Amen.
Thank you for that. Can we have a roll call for attendance at the council, please?
President McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Irredale?
Jesus Excuse.
Trustee Swack?
Here.
Trustee Hawkins?
Here.
And note for the record, the votes put in support of this product and duty treasured in the universe has been excused. Okay, council, we actually have two sets of minutes, minutes of the regular July 11th meeting and then also the minutes of July 25th, special meeting. On the regular meeting of July 11th, are there any questions, changes, or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to approve them should be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for July 11th, 2022.
I'll spread that.
That, John, is a support?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a support to approve the minutes of the July 11th regular meeting. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. House, please say no. Okay, motion here. The minutes of the July 25th special meeting are also in your packet. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to that document? If not, a motion to approve them will be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes on July 26th, 2022.
I'll send it back.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Swack, supported by trustee Hawkins, to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on July 25th. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. House, please say no. Okay, those minutes are approved. And also, I would be remiss not to thank president-elect Alex Kennedy for taking over the July 20th meeting and the rest of you for your support of him. So one last second. We're moving right along. Okay, council has me for an agenda. Are there any questions, changes, additions, deletions? If not, a motion to approve the agenda will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. House, please say no. Okay. The agenda is out. First item on the agenda, after its approval, is the treasurer's report, which you have in your packet. Are there any duties excused? But if you do have a question or need an answer, let me know and I'll try to get it through you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second, Deb.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, Lori, for that, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay, motion here. All right. You know, the council also has me for the accounts payable for the month of June. It should not say June, it should say July.
Mine does say July.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Does say.
Yeah, July too.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of $18,502.59 for general, $25.10 for major, zero for local, and $260 for Mill Park Recreation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Kennedy, second by trustee Swack, to approve the accounts payable. Any amounts stated? Any questions on the motion? Okay, hearing that, we have a roll call, please, Lori.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion here. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Everybody heard, I'll say it for the record, we try to ask you to be brief and to the point. Three minutes to allow others to have an opportunity to speak. Cindy, you got anything for us today?
Yeah, I do, actually, about the Strawberry Festival. Not the festival itself, the parade. So many people were unhappy with it. And I'm with some, they talked to you. Putting somebody's name on a fire truck that we all paid for, we already got a call for you, might want to say something.
And what was it?
Yeah.
One of the people running for position.
In Addison?
At the Strawberry Festival, the parade.
All right, you're the first person, I was not here, so I did not see the parade, so I, that's the first I've heard. So on Addison, there was only one fire truck, wasn't there? Just Addison, from what I heard.
I'll be honest, I didn't pay enough attention. I think, I think I saw what you're talking about, I just don't remember.
So was it an advertisement for?
Yeah, what's it? Change of date?
Canada.
I thought, I thought it was uncalled for. The whole parade, to me, was.
I think, I think there was also another fire truck that wasn't paid for by tax dollar there because it was from somewhere else. It didn't have Addison or anything else on it, it was an older fire truck.
No, no, I don't know. I don't know. It was out of my intention because I honestly didn't think anything of it until they said something, I thought, and then I heard down the line again, several people say that was so bad.
I'll, I'll look into it and recover back what I learned. But yeah, I don't think that would, I'd be really surprised if that was.
I would too, actually. But you know, let's not have political parades at the Strawberry Festival. I told people with little kids to come and there is politics.
Yeah.
Oh, come on.
On another note, I did talk to Fred, and he said that the radar speed sign on Beza Did help?
Did help. Seems to help.
I appreciate going after it. Yeah, I got a call from family on Beza asking for the festival, if they could put the speed sign because people do have a tendency to.
Yeah.
And.
That worked. Was that from Fred or somebody else? Oh, he called you?
No, he talked.
Oh, okay.
I'm friends with Fred.
I know. I'm trying to describe it one more time.
No, it was a little last minute, but we had Bruce Pearson help us out.
Yeah, it worked out good.
Good.
Was there anything else about the parade that was not liked?
No, I just heard, you know, political parade and then the fire truck thing. And actually, that came from Paul Almiron. He said he was going to say something, I says, well, Mike Sudsy really don't have anything to do with it.
No.
This is the first year I actually have helped with the parade.
Right.
So I don't know much about it.
But if, if it's the case of, you know, a bribe that, how do people know that? Oh, see.
Well, we'll get it sorted out.
Yeah.
Somebody will have the picture of it somewhere.
Probably, I do.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah, I think maybe we can just share pictures after the meeting.
Okay.
I mean, if that makes sense.
And we'll move on then to new business. I really appreciate the council's support. It was really a last minute thing, the ADA doors, the door processor and the door motor just, I don't know if it was a lightning strike, but electronic, there was no apparent damage, but nothing worked right. And the door, it was not uncommon for me to have to replace the fuse every few months, but this time when I replaced the fuse, the door almost, when it slammed open, it almost caught me. I mean, I was not prepared for that, a violent movement, so we got the representative for that product out here and the bottom line was, was that we basically had to replace the unit, which was nearly $3,000. So I just wanted to ask the council to authorize that payment because we didn't have the opportunity to do so prior to repairs, but I appreciate the fact that it was a deal breaker for the election. It would have been no problematic for us. So everything went well, although we didn't get it fixed till Monday afternoon. It was as close as you would want to cut it to the election, which was Tuesday. So I'm asking for council to approve that expenditure. And I do give, give them the allowance. Oh, that's, I actually made a long way to prove that technically, but I would appreciate it just because I'm not authorized to spend that much money without council approval. So I'd appreciate a motion to that effect.
Do we know the, do you have the amount?
Is the amount on the council manual, Alice? I don't.
I think it's in the manual, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay.
I don't see anything on the accounts payable.
Yeah. I'm guessing it probably didn't clear before.
Yeah. I can't say the exact amount, I believe it's $29,900 or something like that.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve ADA door repairs to Roland Hall in the range of $2,900 to $3,100.
I see. Motion by trustee Swack, supported by trustee Hawkins, to authorize, no more.
$2900 to $3,100.
To authorize not to exceed $3,100.
Okay, yep.
All right. Any questions on the motion? If none, can we have a roll call on that, please, Lori?
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Motion here. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, you'll find a estimate, actually, two estimates in front of you. In the process of the Strawberry Festival, the Oakland County Health Inspector raised several questionable items over the annex that they managed to get approved, but it was with the understanding that this will be the last time they would approve it with those conditions. One of the things was that it didn't have hot water. The sink drain underneath was leaking. New heat trap is needed and also they're likely to put a new, a new toilet and sink repaired in there as well. Mainly not so much for the public, but because the workers there, under the health department quote, they have to have that stuff readily available. They can't go next door that they do now for, I mean, they still could, but there has to be a facility there. So that, that work is needed and the firefighters' association has said that they would contribute something to helping get, get those repairs made. I really don't expect it to be much, mainly because we're pretty much responsible for that building anyways, but we won't turn it away if they want to offer it. And then for Roland Hall, there hasn't been a hot water heater in this building since before I was elected in 2008. And it's kind of the same thing. This facility is actually an emergency spot where if some, if there's a fire or an emergency where the public power outage, you name it, this is where people are supposed to be able to come. So we'd like, I'd like to also get, the kitchen has similar problems, it's one of the sinks leaks and it needs a, and we're only talking about like those 12 gallon electric water heaters. Problem is, is they're, they're very expensive. I mean, they're almost as expensive as a 40 gallon heater. So the bottom line is, is we have two quotes here, $12,200 for Roland Hall and $1,455 for the annex. So I did not get other quotes mainly because we usually try to stay local and I thought these quotes were pretty reasonable from Anderson funny, who was Mike Kinderman.
I've used him in the past and he's always been very reasonable.
Yeah, he reviews them here as well. So if the council will waive getting the three bids, we'll just consider these for now.
He notes wiring not included.
Yeah, yeah, the wiring's already there, but he's not electrician, so.
Correct, okay. So it's, it's prepped already, it's ready to go.
Yeah, actually.
It was there before.
Yeah, the one in Roland Hall was direct wired. The one in the fire hall has a switch to the plug, in a plug. So that one can just be plugged in. This one is hardwired, so.
Gotcha.
So I guess what is the council's pleasure? I would recommend that we do both of them. It is a significant expenditure, but we can use maintenance for Roland Hall to pay for Roland Hall's and then the old fire hall, probably we can use building maintenance again there, but duty would probably be the, it might require an amendment for that, and maybe transfer of money from one fund to another if we go ahead and authorize both of these, but.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve up to $3,000 for the repair of Roland Hall and the old fire hall per the quotes provided.
Second.
Okay, so, thank you.
That should give you a little bit of wiggle room, is these are estimates only. It's not much, but it's 250 bucks.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
These usually look pretty odd.
Yeah, the total is $2,675, so.
350 bucks.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to make the repairs to both buildings based on the estimates provided for a total about to exceed $3,000. Any questions on the motion? If not, can we have a roll call, Lori, please?
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Motion here. Thank you for that. Okay, the radar signs, we have received the signs, but I was a little bit shocked when I went to order the posts for the signs. They are, the posts are four inch steel pipe, basically, and the two estimates, I was able to find two estimates that were fairly local. Alro Steel quoted the $1,860, $1,860 for both poles delivered. McComb Group has a slightly different pole, it's a little, little lighter gauge, and they quoted $924.42. So I'm kind of leaning towards the McComb Group.
Any concern with the lighter gauge being a source?
Well, I did, I put a call in to, to the company.
I mean, if somebody hits it, it's probably not going to survive either way.
Yeah, no.
I mean, whether it was a heavier gauge or not, it's not.
Yeah, it has to be safe enough to withstand some wind and stuff, so, yeah. I guess it's the council's call. I might be able to, I could order the Alro quoted the, on some, it's a less than quarter inch wall pipe, which, and that, as you can see, it's spent 16, 20 years for the pipe. The pole from McComb was slightly shorter pipe, it's only 21 feet, and it's, I actually only need 18 feet of pipe, but I don't want to pay. What is, cut it.
Yeah, what is the, the cost and what size is it?
Four inch OD.
Okay.
The.
It's just a lighter gauge.
Yeah, the McComb groups, it's got quarter inch walls, but it's, I don't think it's like a high power.
Sure. I was going to say, I know J.S. Steel up in Attica is where I purchased some steel before, and they usually have pretty good, decent pricing. It's close to Pontiac Steel pricing.
So does the council want to authorize some amount for me?
It'd probably go up to, what, a thousand or 1,200, right, to, at least gets.
I really don't want to spend.
I don't want to spend that much.
$60, $1,800 of pipe, but it does make sense.
The whole thing doesn't make sense.
Well, the prices of steel was just run through the system.
No, I'm talking the signs.
Oh, okay. Thanks for your opinion.
Does the one down there, no.
Yeah, it does. No, they do.
I've watched them.
Cindy, you've been on, you've been on Beza and you saw, they do, they do help.
The Strawberry Festival was, I'm sure they had a difference.
Well, the point is that.
Hey, it's up to you, honey, make the rule.
They're a great reminder and they, you know, and like a lot of critics say, enforcement is the only thing that works.
And we don't get it.
And we can't, and we can't get enough of it consistently to make a difference. That's, that's the real problem. So if it's okay, council, I'd ask you to authorize up to, up to $1,200 for the purchase of these poles and I will contact JNS.
JAS Steel, Pontiac, J.A.S. Steel. I'll get you to contact them for your, after meeting.
I'll make a motion to authorize up to $1,200 for the purchase of posts, sign posts.
I'll spread that. Okay, motion by trustee Swack, seconded by trustee Hawkins, to authorize up to $1,200 for the purchase of posts for the radar speed signs. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, would you do a call, please?
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, moving on to old business, the sewer study update. Jennifer has appeared, however, my understanding is, is that there's going to be a meeting with a consultant and Oxford Township supervisor and engineer next week. Just follow up and see if, what, if any options there might be moving towards connecting with Oxford Sewer. So that's all I have right now. The next item on the old business is the pit hole diggers, dog ordinance. We talked about that sometime back, and I have asked the village attorneys to look at that again. By request, I've had a couple residents contact me asking about if you still have a pit hole ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. So technically, we do have ordinance on books, but it's largely unenforced because you can't pick and read per se, you have to identify other characteristics, so aggressive. So I'm just giving you a heads up on that. And then as far as the marijuana ballot update, we have submitted the language that was approved and that you read in the minutes from the special meeting. I have not got any feedback, there's eight days left before the deadline, and I've not given, got any feedback that you were approved or need to do it over again. So hopefully, they're not waiting to the last minute and everything's okay. So we'll see where that goes. And then the nature park, as you saw in the bills, we're, we are getting a vote and I have been talking to Rowe Engineering about the plan, a plan for the nature park still. We broke it up, and you recall, I recommended not accepting their proposal because it was a lot of money. The second time around, they came back and it's still a lot of money. So I'm working on breaking it into pieces and we haven't reached any decision on that yet.
I had proposals.
For layout of the park and fencing and all the stuff we talked about before.
Like that company that mows that nature park, do they also mow like Rad Cross Me, which is like division, that little section? Are they supposed to mow that as well or is that?
No, no, they're just doing the nature park. The village and we also have a couple residents, the mill acres, who have been mowing the trail ahead and across the street. Char, Char used to mow all that.
Yeah.
Char Dan, so now the responsibility's falling to.
I mean, I can always mow it, I just wasn't sure, let's, we were paying somebody to mow it or not, but for not, I don't mind doing it.
Well, if Don mows it, we pay for it, but if Doug mows it, we just apply the gas and he uses our mower to cut it.
Gotcha. I feel like it does get covered often, so if, if, I mean, if I can, I would do for sure. I just didn't want to, like, if somebody's getting paid, do their job for them. And I'm like, oh, sweet. It's funny.
Yeah, we never get to worry about it, being involved because Char and Dan have done it for as long as, actually, this is the 25th year of Holly and Trail. Seems like time flies by.
Ah, seriously?
1997 is when we, when the trail was started, yeah. It's amazing.
Yes.
So there is going to be a celebration on August 28th, I believe.
Oh.
Not sure, but cake and something that's going to be down in Oxford on the trail at what they refer to as Powell Park. It's on Powell Street, where the stop sign is when you're going to Myers, if you go the back way.
Mm-hmm.
And Powell Repair.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll give more details.
The village garage, do you own any of the grass around there?
Yes.
Oh, man, you need to thank Cooper Standard, though. I watch them all at home.
No, they do, they have the business in their area.
No, I figured that, that's very nice of them.
They've always, they've always done it.
Oh, they have? Oh, all right. That's nice of them.
Yes. Okay, so moving on then, property maintenance and enforcement. I've been, I've talked with trustee Irredale and with our attorneys about the question of rentals and also grass cutting responsibilities for property owners in the village. And it's not an easy subject, so part of the problem is, is that some properties in the village, their lawns run all the way, the property line is actually in the road, either the middle of the road or end, they end at the road right of way. So if the grass is not on your property, and it's only a couple residents that don't mow, but just, it makes it hard for, for everybody. So Cindy knows who I'm talking to.
I do.
So anyway, the attorney. So, anyway, the, the attorneys are looking into it, and, um, I will give you their feedback as soon as I receive it. Okay, um, under the last, under old businesses, Eagle Scout sign project, I received a note from Dominic, our boy scout, who, um, attended the strawberry festival and was very happy, he made, uh, five hundred dollars, but unfortunately, he says, um, he, and I pulled him, he says, "I, I hate to ask this of you, but would the village consider donating to the project?" Unquote. I explained to him in a reply to the mail that the village cannot donate money. However, if we receive a service or goods in kind, which in this case we are, we can make a contribution because it is for our benefit, uh, and the benefit of the public good. So, like, I know it's kind of short notice, but I'm wondering, and I really don't see why we wouldn't, I did check with the village attorney, and he said, "You can contribute as much as the value that you're gonna receive." So, I'm gonna point out, uh, on Don Lamb's, I think, of the business, that, that sign, that, uh, water jet sign that's out there, is worth almost a thousand dollars for, for that particular sign. So, we're getting two signs for village buildings plus the signage for the trailhead, exit and entrance sign. So, I'm asking on Dominic's behalf if the council would like to contribute to the project in order to-
Finish it.
Bring it to the conclusion and, and receive benefit for it.
Do we know how much he needs?
Well-
Or do we not?
He, he originally said a thousand dollars, I believe.
That's what I thought, I moved on.
And, um, he's got five hundred dollars, so-
That, that original quote, was that all the signage, or was that just the two, the two primary signs that he was looking to produce? I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, I can't honestly say, um, that I remember it in very detail, Alex. Um, and I did not bring his folder at the time. But, if, if we donate, I told him I would need a sign that required from him stating that the village would receive as bad value, whatever it would be, uh, for the project. In other words, we're not gonna pay him, and have him do something that doesn't benefit the village directly, so, that's why I point out DPW signs.
Yeah.
You know, are kind of weird, if you have a trust, factors on it, but most people don't know what they're there for.
He has, entrance sign is twelve hundred, exit sign times two, two hundred, entrance sign only, two hundred.
He did-
DPW signs, seven fifty each, supplies, four hundred, total cost thirty-five hundred. So, he would need three thousand.
For his project, does he have to, 'cause I know it's part of his project, does he have to do all the signs at once? Or can he do it, we can just do, you decide here, and maybe it's trail header, and then maybe, as time goes on, we can just-
Right.
How that's possible or whatever.
Yeah, what's minimum viable product? I hate to say it like that.
Whatever it is, is that we have the DPW signs, if we contribute, of course.
Yep.
Well, the DPW signs, we're looking at seven fifty each.
Okay.
Entrance only sign is two hundred, and then the exit signs are a hundred each, so it's the, it's the complicated, the big, beautiful one that was twelve hundred is his estimate. Um, and that's the polyant trail entrance sign. So, technically, we have exit only signs currently, right?
Right.
So, we don't necessarily need those.
Well, if we choose to donate, it would be with stipulation that he would have to provide signs that, like the DPW signs would be the first priority, the other signs are directional and more geared towards the polyant trail.
I guess I'd go back to him and say, what satisfies your project too, 'cause if he, if one sign doesn't do it-
I'd, I'd be interested in the DPW signs. Unless, do you think possibly the polyant trail would be also willing to contribute to help for those signs?
That's the bigger cost.
Yeah.
You need one right down here, wait until the polyant trail, you know, there's some people, they ask me where it's at.
Yeah, Linda's given me a couple signs.
Oh, is that she?
She is, they're not big signs, so, a lot of people get down there and they look around and they don't-
Yeah.
Yes, but that's where it is.
If they're not familiar with the area, they don't know to drive, where to drive. So, so, we do, uh, I did look at above it, we do have money in our, um, building, building maintenance on, that we could use, you know, as a commodity, so, it's, it's entirely up to us and what he would like to do, and how much. He did say, and I remember that part pretty clearly, that depending on how much money he raised, that's how much of a project he would get done, if he didn't get it all. So, if we do donate, we could have priority for the DPW, and then whatever other fundraising we could do would have to be done to complete the rest of the project.
Well, he, I, I mean, he's got supplies of four hundred, so he almost, he basically has his supplies taken care of. So, he would just need the, basically the fifteen hundred for DPW signs then. I guess as long as that satisfies his project, it doesn't cut him short.
I guess, would it make sense to this? I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, purchase two signs for the DPW buildings at fifteen, at up to fifteen hundred dollars. And then that leaves us open to the possibility in the future for getting more signs if, if we don't, if that doesn't meet his project. And he'll, he'll have his work cut out for him doing those signs, so-
It'll take-
We, we can, we can always meet back next month or in the future as well, I think.
Is he right here?
See, the exit is over, uh, from Harley Road.
Well, that's like some of the things, what, right?
Right.
He did a good job presenting to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
You got that?
Uh, purchase two of those for the DPW, that costs fifteen hundred.
Okay, that will exceed fifteen hundred?
Yeah, up to fifteen hundred.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to authorize-
Done.
The purchase of two signs for the Eagle Scout project for the DPW, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. That sound, Alex?
Yes.
And Jennifer? Okay, any questions on that motion? Hearing none, we have a roll call, please.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. All in favor? Uh, DPW, I'm glad you're here, Cindy, as always.
Yeah, right.
The, the rosy, right, or are we good?
Well, I think, well-
After all this, right?
When, when I live down by Judy's, because, of course, I don't do there, there's tons of dust.
Right.
I'm thinking, I'll let you know if it needs it, right now, I don't think so.
Okay, because that's really the only question I have at this time, is when, or if we're gonna do another application, so.
I'll keep looking now.
If we hear, if we hear anything from any other residents, we can certainly do a spot treatment or just get the whole village, right? The one who started it after the rainy season, to get it graded again before winter, that would be cost effective, but not necessarily the guy.
It's actually, oh, not very good, since it was rated in the far end.
Okay, on to the president's report, um, we have had no Freedom of Information requests, although we have been contacted several times by Oakland Cares, the organization that passed the petitions for the marijuana, asking where we are and what, what we're doing, so, um, I'm replying. There are new income limits for, uh, Oakland County Black Grant, uh, persons per household. Basically, if there's one person, strictly low income, it's sixteen thousand eight hundred, and if low income, regular low income, uh, forty-four thousand eight hundred is the maximum they can earn in a year. And the number, and it goes up from there based on the number of people. So, if you hear of anybody that might be eligible to be steering the village, and certainly, well, the situation for, uh, my home repair program.
Do we have any outstanding projects?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Everything that was submitted was completed, or?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, um, ordinance enforcement, I don't have anything active at this time. Grass cutting is just usually the main thing this time of year. I did, I did, uh, contact trustee Aaron Dale about the motion from our last regular meeting in July about putting trash cans out, and she said that she'd like to see us use, uh, donated trash cans. But, before they go out, I really, I cannot promise that they'll be emptied regularly, like she said, emptied weekly. We don't have anybody that does that with any regularity, except on the polyant trail. I, I'm usually the one that goes over there and empties that one, so-
Well, the amount that goes in the planners, they should be okay, to just put them in the garbage instead. There shouldn't be an overload of stuff.
Okay, okay, um, but that's kind of why I haven't worked on getting those out yet. I haven't really looked at them yet to see what kind of shape they're in, so.
Where does she plan on putting them, because I see one close by, and very solemn is an empty.
Yeah, we, what's nice is if we can get someone to take, like, if we put it in front of the post office where they emptied, or if we put it here in front of the store, or, you know, it's nice to have someone adopt it. The same arrangement was made with the store, and with some success, but, well, I know it's pretty bad at times.
I literally took him out there, he didn't believe me, 'cause I offered to empty it for him, it was everywhere.
Had, uh, not, not to change the subject, but I saw on YouTube, and it was over in Europe, there's actually, they, they put a huge bin in the sidewalk, down into the ground, and then it just has a normal, uh, waste can, but that whole bin fills up, and when they change it, they use a crane, they lift it up, hold it over the dump truck, the bottom opens up, dumps all the trash in, they close the doors, put it back in the ground, so they don't have to, they practice things after a while, but it's pretty narrow way of approaching it, but we don't have that option, so, sorry, I gotta go. So, anyway, that's, that's where we are in that. It's a little bit impractical at this point in time, but we'll see, maybe, maybe Barber Shop, maybe Nan would let us have one on the front there.
'Cause I think that's where, the barber shop is up, is on that side of the road too.
Yeah.
Be somewhere up here.
So, I'll, I'll have a talk with them. I wanted to inform the council that I have talked with the, uh, township attorney. It seems that engine braking has become a very objectionable, uh, noise, large trucks that have engine brakes on them. Uh, there's a prime example today, about eight o'clock, one came south, got to the hill here, just turned on the engine brake, and it's loud and very aggressive, and he was back at four, three or four times during the day. I never did catch a glimpse of it, so I don't know what it was, but, um, Oxford Town, Oxford Village recently passed an ordinance, and basically it says you can't use your engine brake unless it's an emergency. And really, our hills don't justify engine braking, especially at, at the, our speed limit of twenty-five. I mean, it's pretty ridiculous, uh-
I, I would agree with your statement, at our speed limit.
Yeah.
But judging how they drive, I don't think that matches our speed limit.
You mean they drive faster than-
They definitely do on western-
There's a reason they're using their jake brake.
They're, um, I agree, but they don't have to.
If they follow the speed limit, they wouldn't have to.
So, I guess I'd like to find out if council has any objection or reason not to adopt an ordinance.
How do you get that?
Again, it's near unfortunate, but if we put signs up, they'll know at least that-
How do you get that out to them besides, is it just signs up that says, "No jake brake"?
Yeah.
How about read his book, "No signs", put signs up then? Why?
Well, legally, we'd be in a little trouble if we, uh, put signs up and then have, uh, you know, or the police book somebody.
Okay, and it wasn't actually part of the, okay.
Mike, have you ever talked to them to see if they could come up with leagues? Maybe every, are they be in this area?
Yes, I have seen.
And will you sign us?
They know where the business is, and they get enough calls that they don't have to go. There's one shift, I guess, one, uh, second shift, there's one deputy that does a lot of enforcement, mostly it's on Lakeville Road and Rochester Road. But I have asked, I have asked, and I've asked the traffic enforcement to come out. Traffic enforcement, they, they don't know anybody, so they take it everybody. They're not, you know, they're not always in this area, so it doesn't matter who we are.
Well, they shouldn't, I mean, the speed limit's the speed limit.
Yeah, but the police don't like being bad guy, you know, being the hard guy all the time, you know.
Only being the hard guy, as far as I'm concerned, by not being there, 'cause I think it would help.
So, is there, uh, is there any objection to, it's, uh-
Can we just look at what other people?
This is Oxford's, it's basically, um, to, the, six paragraphs, and, and, and the purchase of the signs and posts would be the only cost for, for this.
Oh, no, not more posts.
But in it, and as far as I'm concerned, it could be, uh, just on, like where your house is, that hill there. We don't get much truck traffic, but-
I do, actually.
Big trucks?
I do get big trucks, yeah.
So, that would be-
I'd say more going out that way too, for whatever-
I don't know why they-
But you know, like, I probably-
Well, you're gonna get worse from Rochester Road, it's now up to one hundred construction.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be till, mid-October.
Yeah, that's-
So-
We need to do good though, if, like, with the jake brakes, they have to go in their parameters and change it often. Some trucks, 'cause I work at a truck company, you actually have to take it in a shop and they'll have to actually program it to disable the jake brakes. So, like, it could be one of the things that maybe have a sign, but if somebody doesn't have enabled or remembered to enable it on their truck. It was a reminder for sure.
I think it would keep the honest people, honest, honest drivers, and, you know, that's, and most of them, I remember when I, when I worked at GM, uh, it was always a lever switch, you could turn it on and off.
Well, we could put them on some of the existing poles, right, some of the signs, if we were to get-
Yeah, I think so.
We save a pole cost.
Yeah, there you go. I have, I have to check the sign laws.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a similar ordinance to what Oxford Township has just passed for engine braking in the village of Leonard.
It was Oxford Village.
Oxford Village.
Not Township, okay. Thanks, thank you.
My support, as amended.
Thank you, John. So, we have a motion by Kennedy, seconded by trustee Hawkins, to, um, adopt an engine exhaust ordinance, similar to that of Oxford Village. Okay, are there any questions on the motion? How in favor of the motion, if you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Most can say aye. It's a motion here. I think that's it for the report. Okay. Okay, so moving on to the trustee trailer reports. Summer Festival Committee, I guess they didn't have it last week?
It's gonna be on the fifteenth.
August fifteenth?
We're gonna wrap up the, uh, six, six.
Okay, uh, cable commission, um, will be here, as I stated earlier, to make a presentation on their budget and their year, yearly report. I did ask if there was an intention to ask for a change in our payment formula to them. We contribute all of the PEG funded funds that we receive from AT&amp;T and the franchise funds remain in the village for our use. The, um, charter, charter, because it's been, uh, we've had a contract of so long, which we recently renewed, they do not pay PEG fees. They're only obligated to do the PEG fees, which are educational programming fees. They're only required to do those in their first contract with a community. Then after that, if the community wants those fees, the community has to do a study to determine how those fees and where those fees would be appropriate for that community. So when we renewed the franchise a couple of years ago, maybe it's been three or four years ago, we do not get PEG fees from Charter, any of Charter's spectrum. So we pay them, we pay sixty, I think we pay forty percent of the franchise fees that we get from Spectrum, we pay them to the cable commission. So they get all the PEG fees from AT&amp;T and put no franchise fees. And forty percent of the money that we receive from Spectrum in the franchise fee goes, goes to the cable commission. So I'm just telling you that that's, that's how it works, or how it has worked. Some communities pay more, some, I don't think any pay less, because we all contribute somewhat to it. And what, generally, that means anywhere from twelve hundred dollars a quarter to thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars a quarter, um,
That we pay with our fees.
That goes to the cable commission from our fees.
And then we get, how much comes to us out of all that?
I asked you to do that, and unfortunately, it's in, it's in our financial statements, our audits, which, um, we should be getting shortly, but the current books are at the audit, the audit I've done, so I didn't have a way of getting that information, so. But you can look at our budget.
It should be, what, twenty-five hundred or something like that, way it's based on.
It's, um, income.
Three thousand, then. Cable table franchise, three thousand.
Yeah, three thousand, somewhat, over there. It's been going down, but they have been a better.
Some light.
Yeah, straight, uh, saddles. Okay, um, so that's, that's all I have for cable. Decorating committee, um, they got, had a, we had a good strawberry festival, we had the polls painted. I'm imagining at some point they're gonna be talking about fall decorations.
We're gonna try to push that out as soon as.
We can wait that, okay.
Push that out to probably, end of October or something like that.
Okay, and then, uh, North Oakland Transportation Board, maybe a big expenditure were paving, repaving the parking lot and expanding it to provide more parking for the, for the buses. And they were also installing a, um, a gas meter fuel pump system so that the vehicles can be, well, we're saving money
Building ourselves.
By doing it ourselves and keeping it local. So, um, spending over, I think it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars on that contract. They have, they have the funds for this, they're doing quite well. Okay, planning commission.
We have not had a meeting.
Been suggested to cancel August and then.
And must we lead it?
We will have a September meeting, because I'd like to have the planning commission aware of the ramifications of the marijuana. Also, people will likely contact them, you know, ask them questions and that, so.
Gotcha.
I'd like to meet with them and.
Cancel August, do I have to make a motion?
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to cancel the August meeting.
I'll second.
Planning commission meeting.
Here we have a motion by trustee Swack, seconded by trustee Kennedy, to cancel the August regular meeting of the planning commission. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The most please say no. Okay, motion carries. All in, management travel, uh, I believe August 28th is the twenty-five year celebration. We're expecting cake and coffee, uh, for, for that. And we'll send out, um, a definitive date and time for that, as soon as I get it. And then, uh, village park, I think we updated that. It is being mowed, it is nice, they're having, several people have complimented, uh, the village for the upkeep there. Thanks to the, from the request of Cherry's family. And then, uh, community development Black Grant, I did not get a report this month. So we either haven't gotten it or it was county consent, so.
Cindy reached out to Mike, her and the committee, we got it late, we could get it to happen, but I got it in the mail for Friday.
I assume it's unchanged.
Thursday, yeah.
Thank you, didn't know that. But it would be, it would be the same as previous before, we haven't spent, we haven't had no projects, so. And that's all I've got, unless somebody has something else.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Mike, can I ask something, because I saw a slush of yours. Are they making a couple trees or something?
Yeah, just a moment, just a minute. I've, I've got a motion on the floor.
Well, I thought I had to do that on John's.
No, I'll, I'll talk to you.
John's second, please, yes, I can do that.
John's second.
I've talked at that last meeting.
I understand.
I understood, I'm just.
Uh, we have a motion in support of adjourn the meeting, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The most can say no. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.